All right, welcome everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order this Livingston City Commission meeting on April 2nd at 5:33 PM.
Chair Cale.
Here.
Vice Chair Noots.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
President.
Commissioner Alliance here.
Commissioner Willage.
Here.
Of course.
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna start out like we always do with public comments. So this is public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Individuals are reminded that public comment should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, control jurisdiction, or advisory power. I'll also remind folks that our, we do time our comments to four minutes, just so you're aware of that. So if anyone would like to make public comments for items not on the agenda, we'll go ahead and start in the room and then I'll go online. Is there anyone in the room that would like to make any comments on anything that's not on the agenda tonight? I am seeing none, so we'll go ahead and check online. Anyone online would like to make public comment for items not on the agenda tonight? Feel free to raise your hand or just come off mute and give us your name. We none, so we'll go ahead and close public comment for this evening, for general public comment. We'll go ahead and move on to consent items. Commissioners, would anyone like anything pulled from the consent item this evening?
I'm gonna pull, since I had me.
Consent item A. Anything else? All right, if not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, since I have say through D.
Motion by News in a second, by Schwartz, or excuse me, Lions. I'm not looking at it. All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, motion carries. It's Chair Noots.
So, I just wanted, I need to make this iPad work.
Make your time.
Okay. There's just two contracts. I thought it would be nice to chat about. One is just acknowledging, let's see if I can find the number. Yes, school, school, school. It's the one with the rodeo association. I can't remember the number very now.
276.
Let's see.
75.
75, thank you, okay. So, I'm looking at page 38. I recognize that the other person signing this contract potentially, if we prove it, is a contract city employee. So I just wanted to bring it up and give Mr. Gager a chance to address potential conflicts or what that might look like.
Appreciate the opportunity, Vice Chair Noots, and you are correct on Contract 20075, the signatory for the Livingston Rodeo Association. Their president is a contractor of the city of Livingston. I guess pleased or, you know, appropriate to report that the Mr. Becker, the other signatory, had no involvement really in the drafting of the contract and this form of contract is identical to ones that we have used in the past. And, and so I do feel comfortable also. Mr. Becker plays no role not only in drafting of the contract on this side, but also in approval on this side. So I do feel comfortable that we've insulated ourselves from any potential conflict there.
And hypothetically speaking, in a worst case scenario where something happened and it, because his role would be to defend the city, right? Imagine you have a plan in place, if there was a conflict of interest. Not that I would expect one, but just to get it on the record, could you share?
Yeah, to be clear, Mr. Becker, for anybody that might not be aware, is our contract city prosecutor, and so he handles prosecutorial matters. John Hess here handles our civil and contractual matters, and he also would be the party that would be responsible in defending the city.
Okay.
And so, Mr. Becker's involvement, I think, is pretty isolated.
I don't think that anything's gonna happen. I just like wanna address it since people recognize that name.
I appreciate you bringing it up.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, the other, the other question I have is about the next one. 76. So this is the one where it's Bike Club, yeah?
That's correct.
Montana Tours. So I have some questions, since this is a little bit different. When I was reading city code, as one does, like Section 9240, 241, and Section 1026 talks a bit about camping and city ordinances, and we don't have something that exactly covers camping and city parking lots, but we have something for camping and city parks and the process. So I'm interested in knowing about the special exception process that would allow camping in this parking lot and other things that folks might be thinking about. You know, there's certain things that need to happen on site, right, for camping to be allowed to protect the natural environment? So, if it's okay, Carrie, Mr. Gager, could you speak to the process for that, since we don't have anything exactly set out in code for this?
That's a great question. The Livingston Municipal Code zoning provisions related to publicly zoned land, well, the use matrix does not touch upon camping as being allowed use anywhere. And so this, this arrangement, if this agreement is approved by the commission, we would enter, the city would enter into a separate special event permit with the organizers of this event, and we would manage the camping through that process. And they have submitted a special event permit. This really is the first step in understanding if we would move forward with allowing that event. And as part of that special event process, the city staff works with applicants to understand garbage collection, personal waste, water, those other types of sanitary needs that come along with camping uses. Typically, the more rodeo-related uses do have some onsite camping involved. However, those individuals typically are in an RV or some other mobile unit that they are providing. So the Montana Tour Contract 20076 is a little bit different in that regard and would be governed by a separate.
Okay. I guess the other thing I would point out, because I did get some feedback from the community on this. And this is like a pretty long conversation. Do you remember? I'm having a hard time remembering when that wooded area came into city property. It's like between Mayor's Landing and this roping arena. Do you remember?
Well, it's not a wooded area, it's a, it's not.
But just off, adjacent to it, like, yeah, that wooded area. Do you remember, or do you know, Mr. Gager?
You know, I'm aware that Mayor's Landing and the Driving Range area came to the city in like the 1920 area, but there may be another parcel in there that came later on.
So there's been some conversations in the community about all these different parcels. The Mayor's Landing, that wooded area that's more recent, because people came and lobbied us and they told us what they wanted done with that area. That's what I remember. And then this parking area and how it all, how they interface with each other, how they interface with the greater like public land, parkland in Livingston, and then also being adjacent to the river access. And I guess my hope potentially is that all of these things could be included in that community conversation that happens about parklands. Because we've never really had like a cohesive conversation around all of the things that sort of trickled in. Do you have thoughts on that?
Yes, and actually, I guess I'll point back to the commissioners when we adopted the budget last July. You may recall that we set aside $30,000 for a Parks Master Plan, and actually recently we ran a request for proposal on that one, and through the due diligence period, we're unable to award a contract. So we will be issuing that RFP here in the coming weeks. And, and when we get that consultant on board to do the Parks Master Plan, this area is one that we will review because, quite honestly, we get a lot of inquiries about different uses on the roping arena land specifically. People have ideas about parking or other kind of complimentary uses to Mayor's Landing. So yes, this whole area is intended to be reviewed as part of that process, and I appreciate bringing that up as well.
Camping is another one of those things, and bike touring is like a thing that's come up before in the past, but we've also never had like an opportunity to really like roll that into a conversation with that. If people even want to allow it in Livingston, and what it might even look like if it's possible, right? So I'd be interested to know if that could be part of the conversation when we get there.
Oh, absolutely.
We did allow it in second Julia Park one year with the similar bike tour.
It actually was this place.
Same group.
And then we, so I will say, at a staff level, that was the initial request was, we'd like to use second Julia because they like to lock their bikes in the tennis court areas more secure overnight. And so at a staff level, we reviewed that request and late June, the last week of June, felt like a little bit of a difficult time to exclusive use of such a large park area to a private group. So this was, you know, a bit of a settlement, that negotiation that the staff had with the organizers as a possible opportunity.
No, that's a much better area. I mean, just keeping the park free and open, yeah.
Okay, I'll look forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is really all that I had, Chair Cale. I was getting clarification.
Do I have a motion? Does anyone have anything else on this?
All right, the motion to approve consent item E.
Second.
I have a motion by Noots and a second by Schwartz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Right, we're gonna move on to proclamations. Get to the right position. Okay, so we're gonna be at two proclamations this evening. The first one is a proclamation declaring April 14th through the 20th, 2024, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Communicators Week in the city of Livingston. You see, we have some of our dispatchers and communicators in the back. Do you like to stand up while I read that proclamation? You don't have to, but you like to celebrate, celebrate, you know, for sure. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time requiring law enforcement, fire, or emergency medical services, and public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact for citizens in need of these services. And whereas the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and paramedics, it's critical to protecting life and preserving property when emergencies occur. And whereas the safety of all law enforcement officers and firefighters depends on the quality and accuracy of information provided to the Livingston Park County 911 Dispatch Center by citizens. And whereas public safety telecommunications serve as the vital link for law enforcement officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities via radio, providing them with information and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunications of the Livingston Park County 911 Dispatch Center have sustainably contributed to the apprehension of criminals, suspension or suppression of fires and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has demonstrated compassion, understanding, and professionalism in the performance of their duties over the past years, and now therefore be resolved on behalf of the Livingston City Commission, I, Carrie Cale, Chair, do hereby declare April 14th through the 20th, 2024, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Livingston, Montana, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and all of our citizens safe. Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Gager, if you have anything, and then I'll go to the commissioners.
You know, I would just thank Mariah, Barbie, and everyone else in the dispatch center for everything you do every day. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Awesome work. Keep it up. We've been extraordinary group of dispatchers. They're very, very big people.
We get the emails about what you do when nobody's watching. Thank you.
Yeah, we do.
You hear the good things you do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, and thank you so much. We'll let you, you can join us still, or you can go back to work, whenever you prefer today. All right, thank you. All right, we have one more this evening. And this is a proclamation declaring April 6th through the 12th, 2024, as the week of the young child in the city of Livingston. And I know we have some folks in the room who work with our children, and so I would invite you to stand up if you would while I read the proclamation. All right, here we go. Whereas the first year of a child's life are the period of the most rapid brain development and lay the foundation of all future learning. And whereas high-quality early care and education helps build strong developmental foundations for young children during the years of greatest brain development, leading to positive outcomes for individual children and helping them be better prepared for school and more likely to succeed in life. And whereas high-quality early childhood education depends on highly skilled, educated, competent, consistent, and comprehensive early childhood educators who ensure that children, supported by families, have the early experiences they need for a strong foundation. And whereas Livingston, Montana is dedicated to education and understands that early care and education is key for young children that need developmental appropriate, accessible, and available early care and educations in an education setting. And now therefore be resolved on behalf of the Livingston City Commission, I, Carrie Cale, Chair, do hereby declare April 6th through the 12th, 2024, to be the week of the young child in Livingston, Montana. Further, I urge all members of our community to support efforts that increase children and families' access to high-quality early childhood education. We send our gratitude to our local childcare providers, preschools, schoolteachers, and all those committed to helping young minds grow and develop. You are all essential to the community. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I would thank everyone who's in attendance that works with children especially, and then if I could, I would invite Maggie, our rec director, to talk about some programming that we have for young kids coming up here. Maggie?
Thank you. And I, if you don't mind, will also bring John Gregory up to the table as well to just give a brief overview of the Park County Early Childhood Coalition that leads a lot of efforts in our community, and John is also with, well, with Community Health Partners. So John, do you want to introduce yourself and the Early Childhood Coalition?
Sure, yeah. John Gregory, working at Community Health Partners, oversee a variety of parent support programs, and we have been involved in the Early Childhood Coalition of Park County for well, since its inception, so for 12 years. As far as the week of the young child is concerned, I know that we both have been active in it and helping make it happen for seven years. So Maggie's got a bunch of stuff through the city on this display that was up just a moment ago. Fun, awesome things happening for families with young children. We also are coordinating a host of activities and then opportunities, like to go get a free kite at the kite shop, or to go have a free pass to the Grizzly Discovery Center on the hill, or to go swim at Chico on Tuesday in the week of the young child. So look, if you're on the socials, look for more about what's going on next week, but we're always excited to highlight the importance of supporting families with young children and to make good things happen for them.
Yeah, and from the city standpoint, just to speak directly to what we do, like John said, we've been engaged for seven years. It partners hand in hand with Wiggly Wednesday that occurs at the Civic Center Weekly, which is a phenomenal program and takes a village to run. But we are happy to be at the table and partners as well. So we will introduce just some members that Park Elite Sports has been a member with us, joining in the gymnastics world. So we invite them over from their business to come and teach some free classes to the community and to the youngest children, so they can reach all the way to 18 months with their programming, up to above seven years, and introduce them to the art of gymnastics and the idea of movement. And then through a contract partnership that we have with the city, we offer soccer tots and baseball tots. So myself and Julie in the rec office will be running those programs. And again, just those touch points with the families and the kids, both from a parent and me or grown-up in me standpoint to independent children, just getting them moving and the joy of properly moving and chasing the ball and engaging with their fellow young friends is always fun. And then the third program at the Civic Center will be Growing Up Wild is a relationship we have with FWP, Fish Wildlife and Parks, and it's a great curriculum that is just, I was telling John about it, it's endless, and they provide a curriculum book. So Suzie from our office will offer that and just handpick some programs that are accessible and attainable and introduce our youngest friends to the idea of nature, be it inside with opportunities if the weather is not holding, or we'll step outside if we, if we can.
So I wonder whether we might give Andrea a moment to talk about what she does. Maggie and I had programs that support young people. Andrea works with young people every day.
We do.
Yeah.
Do you like that stuff?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. I'm Andrea Siziknano, and I just wanted to let the town know that I'm launching a forest school program. So the program is for three- to five-year-olds. It's a preschool, and it's entirely outdoors all year round. So I'm doing a summer program as to open up to a little bit older children, three to 10 years old, and then the school year from September to June will be for three to five. And it's a two-day-a-week preschool. And it's all about them kind of gaining confidence in the outdoors and autonomy, child-led, so it's a lot of free play and children making decisions for themselves. The practical skills of forest school is tool use, fire building, shelter building, knot tying, things like that. So it's a concept that's come over from Scandinavia, but it's slowly making its way across our country. And so I'd love to just get the word out about that to anyone here in Livingston who knows of any three-to-five-year-olds who need that type of programming. I have some flyers that I can leave out for anyone to take as well.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you for all your hard work, all of you. I so appreciate it. So, all right, move on to that part of our agenda. All right, we are moving on to our action item this evening. Action item A, Resolution 5128, a resolution of the City Commission of the city of Livingston, Montana, creating the Livingston Recreation Facility District. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Cale. The item before the commission this evening is, is really the final step in a long process that began, well, many years ago, but in earnest in December, when you folks called for an election regarding establishment of the Livingston Recreation Facility District. And as you may recall from our special meeting on March 25th, when you folks adopted the results of the election as presented by the election administrator, that voters in the district or in the city did approve creation of the district. And so Montana Code annotated establishes that the the final step in the process of creating the district is the passage by you folks, the governing body of an ordinance or resolution that calls for creation of the district within 30 days of approval of the referendum. And so before you is Resolution 5128, which does officially create the district and does so in accordance with Resolution 5124, which you folks adopted on December 19th to call the election. And so I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Commissioners?
I just have two clarifying questions. I know they're in here, but just to make it verbal for people listening at home. I had the question several times. When exactly does the district start collecting? The fees and, and secondly, in the event that nothing gets built, what happens to the district?
Two excellent questions, and I'll take them in order. So the, the Resolution 5124 that you folks adopted in December specified that assessments related to the district would not begin until the building achieves substantial completion. And as of right now, the city does not expect substantial completion could be achieved before 2026. So calendar year 2026 is, is the first year that we would expect them to, the assessments to appear on people's tax bills, although depending on, on how the coming design and construction processes go, that may push till 2027, but at this point, we expect it will count in year 26. And in the event that the, so we do have a contingent lease that you folks approved with the district, however, or excuse me, with Four Ranges Community Recreation Foundation. In the event that they are unable to raise the funds to complete the project, the lease will not be executed. They are unable to take control of the facility until they have evidence for funding to complete the project. So we do have that, that measure of security, and I appreciate the questions, Commissioner.
Okay, so, but what happens to the district at that point?
So the district will be created, however, no assessments would be
Would be put forward, it's just, it's there but not being utilized.
Exactly, and the, the district itself was, was created specifically to support the operations of such a facility. And so we, we at a city level, if the facility is not constructed, we don't have the opportunity to levy these assessments and then use
Use it for something else. Yeah, I just wanted publicly here, just appreciate, because there, you know, so much disinformation out there, and you say it 100 times, I need to keep saying it, that's all. So thank you. I yield.
Other commissioners?
Yeah. Mr. Noots? What is, so you said it's 30 days from the end of the protest period or approval of the referendum?
That's correct.
So that's 30 days from what date?
So, in, in talking to the bond counsel, approval of the rec, excuse me, of the referendum occurred on March 19th, and so we would have until April 19th to pass this.
And then what is the timeline to raise the funds for the foundation? So you know, is there like the window of time, or could they take 15 years? Like, what's the timeline for them to rein the because obviously the costs are gonna change and everything's gonna change.
Absolutely. Certainly, the expectation is that the foundation will have the funds raised this year. We do have a cancellation clause in the lease that the city commission and the city could elect if we thought the project was dragging on and fundraising process was extending beyond a period that we thought was reasonable.
So the end of the year?
Is, is when I expect currently.
Or we'll have to revisit the conversation if we want to go on, basically. Okay. And hypothetically, if this didn't pass, what would the implications be?
So, fair question. We are here tonight because MCA Section 711-1013 says that to create a special district, the governing body shall issue an order or pass an ordinance or resolution in accordance with the resolution of intention introduced and passed by the governing body or in accordance with the terms of the referendum required under 7-11-1011. And so I'll go back early on, the governing body shall issue an order. The shall here really is prescriptive and not permissive, and so I don't view statutorily that we have much leeway in this action that was, was put to voters. That said, legislative prerogative is wide, but I would expect some supporters to to potentially potentially pursue legal action, but honestly, if this were not acted upon.
Thank you.
And I don't mean that in a threatening way, just realistically.
Thank you.
These are the clarifying questions that I have.
Yep. Any other clarifying questions? I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 5128.
Motion by Schwartz, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lions, okay. So now we will open it up to public comments. We'll start in the room and then go online. I'll remind folks, we do have a timer. It's, and the comments are four minutes. So please feel free to come on up to the podium, give us your name and address, and, and your comments. and your comments. Oh, do you need a pen?
There's no pen.
We got one. We're coming right here.
Jake Heper, three forty five South Main, Livingston. Regarding Commissioner Schwartz's question. What happens if it doesn't happen? I'm wondering what happens if the city voters and some of the county voters who voted to pass this resolution decide to dissolve the special district? Is that how it goes? Do the is do the the residents of the city and the property owners in the county or property in Livingston have a chance to dissolve it?
So Jake.
Although, okay, although I'm looking at both of them, okay.
Well, so we'll circle back around. We're going to get public comment, and then we can circle back around the questions.
Okay, well, that's my, that's my comment. And I I really, like, my comment is, I really think I'm just trying to figure out who this governing body is. You, Commissioner, Kaylee, you said the Wellness Center is a private election. They're responsible for the election. They're responsible for doing anything. As far as I can see, the the four commissioners Friedman, Schwartz, Kaylee, and Newt, and the city manager have been coordinating or synchronized swimming with the Wellness Center, et cetera, as far as the passengers, they want this done by hook or by crook. And I just think, if I didn't say anything better, I'm I'm thinking about Michigan, Wisconsin, Minnesota, ballot harvesting. I think you and the Wellness Center basically were buying votes, sending out them out. Also, I think this is a crooked election. And I'm surprised, well, I'm not surprised you certified it. You'd do anything. Goodbye.
Any other comments for folks in the room? Anyone else in the room? We'll go online. Any public comment from folks online? Feel free to raise your hand or just come off mute and give us your name and address, please. And I ask one more time, just to make sure people have the opportunity to come off mute. Patricia, I'll come right back to you. Let me just double check online, and then I'm going to come to you. Okay? Um, anyone else online would like to get public comment? Okay, seeing none. Patricia, come on up. Thank you for your.
Patricia Grabo, two oh four East Cali Street, Livingston. Um, I would like to say commend the city on on what happened with the vote of the Wellness Center. And having been online for about four days, almost nonstop with those people who had concerns, legitimate concerns, and I I had been aware of the Wellness Center and involved in the dialogue since two thousand sixteen, so I was familiar with all of the implications. But there were so many citizens for whom this was new. This was something that was surprising to them. They didn't understand a lot of things that were involved in the in the Wellness Center. And I I can't tell you how grateful I am that it ended up where it ended up, not not down at our beloved Secretary Park. But given that, I would encourage the city to have some kind of mechanism by which those voters who, in many ways, they were responding to things that had happened in the city which had nothing to do with Wellness Center. They're concerned about what happened in Great Acres, what happened with Montex subdivision and other things. And in many ways, they were feeling alienated from their city and their government. And so reacted to what I think was an excellent deal for us in the city of Livingston. I'm just thrilled that it passed and worked hard for it. But I would like us to consider some sort of mechanism. So as we move forward with this Wellness Center, so we take a look and listen to what they had to say and respect what they had to say. And then understand that this is where these are the places where the misinformation started creeping in. And this is where perhaps something they didn't understand of the part of the negotiation. So I don't think that it would be all that difficult to put it on the city website or to have some sort of dialogue going on. So if people are concerned, there is a way to to continue to have that information stay public in front of people if they have concerns to hear what they have to say. And they can't all call the city manager, although he's certainly open to that. But there you are, our, you are our brains. You are our mind and for the city commissioners even to stay open to this. I'm not sure the mechanism, but I would certainly encourage it having been involved in this, because the more we split, the more we separate, the more there's misinformation that is not necessary. The less it is a joyous thing for us. And and that's what this is meant to be. So it's just my encouragement to the city in this regard. Respect the deciding point of view. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. I'm going to circle around one more time to folks in the room or online. Any other public comment? Give one more call. Public comment either in the room or online. Okay, seeing none. We'll go ahead and put a public comment. So we did have one question, Mr. Gager, about can the district be dissolved? And then commissioners, I will give us an opportunity to respond to some of that other comment, but if you're prepared to answer that question, actually, or
Yeah, no, I I appreciate the question. And and yes, there is a process in 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 a code annotated for the dissolution of special districts. And the local government body, yourselves, do have the power to dissolve special districts when it suits your needs. And in in the words of Montana Code annotated, you know, your your decision is absolute, the city commission's decision is absolutely in the dissolution. So that that power does rest with the folks.
I don't know if Patricia had questions, but maybe we can address that in our deliberation. But did you hear other questions that I missed to ask Mr. Gager this time?
I think there were two emails that came in that have quite a few valid questions that have that are worthy of time. Yes. So, Mr. Gager, I think you've seen those emails. There's quite a few questions in them. First, I'd like to ask that we make sure that those get put into the record. Thank you. And then I'm wondering if there are questions in there. They there's several questions in these emails. I don't know who, if if we, if everyone has seen them.
I have.
Mr. Gager, if you'd like to pick out a few questions that you think are pertinent, and then perhaps if we, as a commission, see others that we would like to have answered, we can ask. Does that seem to work?
Mm hmm.
Okay.
So, yes, we, the city did receive two emails related to the project. And as I go through, you know, I'm scanning for, I guess, question marks. In the earlier email. So a few of the questions, and I I guess please tell me if if I'm taking too much latitude here, commissioners, but there's a a statement that that says to my knowledge, no feasibility studies have been completed. This is the first time I have experienced a project of this magnitude being taken on by a local government without the requirement of feasibility studies. And then several questions are can a facility of this size be supported by the community? A secondary question, could thirty three hundred households support this project if it relied solely on voluntary membership? Thirdly, how many private pay members outside of the city limits are projected to join the center and how many will be required for the numbers to work? So those three questions, can a facility of this size be supported by the community? I would say yes, the 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 financial plan that was put together by myself and other staff members, I think demonstrates that this specific facility can be supported by this community, certainly given the the passage of the special district. You know, I I would say the 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 reality is that the several of the larger grants for this facility were contingent upon creation of the district. And so that is, you know, why this path was pursued. You know, so yes, I think the operations of this facility could be supported by this community as it's currently conceived. And another arrangement that was not contemplated or that was contemplated but not pursued. Yes, it it seemed like there was a way to support this facility in 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 different arrangements. And so I guess that gets a little of that second point, could thirty three hundred households support this project if it relied solely on voluntary membership? The answer to that is yes. The 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 cost of membership to members would be different than it is today because of the the loss of 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 the district revenue. And how many private pay members outside the city are projected to join the center and how many will be required for the numbers to work? You know, we have at least two financial feasibility analyses that have been presented or been created by outside entities. As as some of you folks that that work in in the private sector may know, revenue is equal to price times quantity. And certainly where the price of a good is set influences the the demand for that good. And so moving up and down that demand curve without getting too much into microeconomics, there are certainly many ways to to match supply and demand up through the the pricing equation there. And so that question certainly, I guess there's there's more than one answer to that. It is not a discrete amount of 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 memberships at a certain price. There are many ways to get to that that answer. Continuing to look down, there is another question, two questions, it looks like, related to life safety. And I'll state the the preamble, given that there is only one underpass to access this side of the city, is it sufficient, given the impact the train usage has on the other two roads that can cross over the rail? Can all life safety vehicles make it under the underpass? The answer to that is, yes. The 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 underpass is sufficient to serve the north side of the of the city, regardless of of the existence of of the Wellness Center. And can all life safety vehicles make it under the underpass? The answer to that is a definitely yes. So as we move forward, looking for again, there was a question in the environmental studies section. And again, the preamble, and please, if if this is a bad format for the commission, feel free to let me know, but the preamble, all projects break in surface area or require environmental studies. My understanding is the selection location had significant contamination requiring extensive remediation. Would additional remediation will be required to make the site suitable for public use as proposed? What is the cost and who is paying for it? The commission and the community may remember that the Four Ranges Foundation undertook a phase two environmental on the Katy Manel Park site and the the presence of VOCs and metals were below below required levels that would require any remediation and in in some cases were not measurable. And so at this point, the only proposed remediation on the project is a soil gas system. Bless you. This is being added a a little bit as a as a a safety measure and is similar to the the radon mitigation systems that that many Livingston residents enjoy in in their personal residence. It is not being done because there is because there's a needed, it was recommended as a just a potential extra measure that we may undertake. The cost of that is being evaluated now. It is assumed to be less than a hundred thousand, probably closer to fifty thousand dollars, and that would be the responsibility of the Four Ranges Foundation. The city has pledged to work with them to pursue the EQ funding where it may be available and may be necessary. So moving down, there's a question related to to operating and capital budgets. And so I I guess you know, I will kind of condense the preamble a little bit to to be, donations toward operating costs are not in perpetuity. What is the impact on the taxpayers when those funds are no longer available? You know, it it is a great question. You may recall that the the foundation has committed to raising a five million dollar endowment and 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 that initial endowment, the the financial models that that myself and staff had prepared show that that endowment is sufficient through at least thirty years of operating support. And so we we don't expect that it would be be depleted within those first thirty years. We do also understand from the foundation that it is their intent to be a a going concern, if you will, in the community and to support the operations of the of the rec center in perpetuity as long as it exists. Not only on the the capital side, but but on the operating side, and certainly with relation to scholarships and programming. Have had some conversations even as recently as as last Friday with with members of the Four Ranges Board about about ongoing support and and really their excitement to to support the needs of the city related to that. A another question, and this looks like it might be the final question mark in the email, are what are the conditions that are tied to private funding? And and there are several conditions tied to the the private funding. I I mentioned earlier the creation of the district as one requirement. And and so we've we've fulfilled that. The large, the largest gift also requires that capital and operating financial plans be provided to the grantor before they release their funds. And there is also, I think, as has been discussed in a public meeting last summer, there is discussion around the the naming of the facility tied to that that largest grant. And there are some provisions in there to include the the grantor's name in the facility, although that is through the terms of the grant, that is something that that can be discussed. And it's it's my understanding from from talking to representatives of that grantor that 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 is still something that that they welcome a conversation on. And so those, as I look through that, the first email that was provided to me by the commission, which I appreciate, I think I've addressed all the question marks, happy to stand for any, anything that I may have missed there.
On that one, coupled.
Um, first, I just wanted to state a person's name also for the record. I know it's going to be written, but if they were here, they would have to say their name. So Peter Kovago, I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Or a couple other things. It didn't have question marks, but they invited a response, I believe. One is the city and how it it appears that through this email, perhaps it's not obvious how the city responded when the county commission determined they would not allow county voters to vote on a district. I believe that the city was responsive and the commission was responsive. And the plans did change. So I was hoping perhaps you could speak to that a bit because it and then I have one more thing after that.
Um, yeah, no, I I absolutely. So, yeah, I guess for clarity of for those folks at home who don't have the email in front So, yeah, I guess for clarity of, for those folks at home who don't have the email in front of them, and I apologize for not preparing it in advance. So, the, little bit of the preamble into the question. "Once Park County residents became aware of this project, there was overwhelming concern enough for the Park County Commissioners to not support the proposed project. This alone should have created cause by the advocates for the project and those representing the community within the city limits." And I absolutely agree with that statement. And, you know, really, I would point out for the commission, as you know, that conversation with the county commissioners happened in mid-August. And the, the decision was not made by the city commission to put the referendum on the ballot until December nineteenth. And so, we, we took, my recollection is about four months and one day to actually go back and reconsider the project. Was during that time, you might recall that I had some conversations with the Four Ranges Foundation regarding the five million dollar operating endowment, and that really was, was, was how that was created. And also, there were some decisions and conversations had related to the capital portion of the project. And, and that was in that timeframe where the, the, the thought to work with the Great Falls Project to achieve some capital cost savings was, was born in those four months of project consideration there. So, yeah, I appreciate the point, and I do think that myself and others related to the project did make some material changes after the Park County Commissioners elected to not participate.
The other point that was made in this email was about the marketing of the project. I'll just read what it says, the marketing of the project. It was being sold verbally and through mail marketing flyers as being free to the community. It is not free, it is forced membership via tax increase. I've attached examples of the marketing materials that have been distributed to the community. I believe the marketing was steering the voter to believe it was free. And then, down below, there's another bit that goes with this, where the person who sent the email states that they asked these questions, the questions that we just went over. They asked these questions, "When an advocate knocked on my door to promote the project, she could not answer any of them." It appears that there might be some confusion about the city's role and the other group's role in this process. And I was hoping that you could speak to that, and recognizing that we, you know, where, where is the line in terms of like, the city being able to, to influence or not what somebody is putting in a campaign message? I think that like some clarity could be used around those topics, if you feel comfortable speaking to that.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to that a bit. So, after December nineteenth, when the decision was made by the commissioners to place this on the ballot, you know, the city at that point became very restricted in what actions we could take related to the project. And specifically, we are unable to advocate for, for an item that is to appear before voters. And so, the city did not create any mailers, did not do any door knocking, and really expended very little effort on the, on the project other than arranging certain contracts and other elements that would be required for the project to move forward if the referendum succeeded. We did not create collateral. We did host some information on our website to try to, again, educate the community without advocating. And so, I had seen those flyers, I received several of them at my house. And, and, yes, I, I will acknowledge that there is wording on those flyers that did not come from the city and would never have come from the city, including describing the project as free. I do recognize that this project, as approved, has, has placed a, an additional line on everyone's tax bills. And I certainly take that consideration, that action, you know, very, very seriously, not just as a taxpayer, but also as a resident here in the city. And so, I do regret some of the language that was used, but, but I will remind folks that it was not put forward by the city and, and our ability really to, to work with those advocating on behalf of the project is a bit limited after a question is put on the ballot.
All right, and then we had one other email from Arlene Romer. The Beltre, thank you. The, the bigger question that I, the first question I sort of see in here and the rest, I think, is a lot of more like just statements. Is she is asking that some voter spell it was misleading to not put information about the mill rate? And she's talking about how it was on the ballot. Since that is the typical, and then she's saying, since that is typical on a ballot initiative of this nature. Can you address that?
Yeah, I, the, the city of Livingston worked with one of the leading bond council firms in the state to develop the referendum language. It is very, very similar language as was used elsewhere in the state in two thousand and twenty-three for several similar referenda. And so, you know, I, I personally did not write that language, no staff ever wrote that language. That was, that was one that we used the advice of the professionals to do.
Any, are you seeing any other questions in Arlene's email that you'd like to have asked? And this is going to go on the record, right?
Yes.
So the public can see what we're seeing.
Both of these emails will go on the record. And Mr. Gager, I don't know if there, I feel free, if there's something else in there you'd like to address.
You know, there is, there is a question mark. So, you know, I guess in the, in the interest of ensuring that we address the questions as presented, you know, point G in, in this Beltre's email, which states, "The projected salaries for many of the Wellness Center employees will be higher than the median salary of Livingston residents, and sometimes more than twice as much. Is that fair?" And, you know, I would, I would point out that the city of Livingston is, is but one employer in this large employment market that we all live in. And so, like every other employee, it's incumbent upon us to provide compensation, salary, and benefits, a total compensation package that is competitive with the market. And I think we have done that, and we strive to do that up and down and across the, the organization. We've taken some steps, as you know, in the last year to make the city a more competitive workplace, because we had a situation where we could not, you know, fully staff the police department and a police chief, you know, came with, to me with the question of, you know, if you want me taking calls mid-week or mid-day, or do you not want to have somebody on from three to five AM? And the obvious answer there was, chief, you're, you're running calls today. And, you know, I'm thankful for the actions that you folks took in July with this budget that we don't have that issue anymore. We are nearly fully staffed up in the police department and every other department. In fact, I think I'm only aware of three permanent full-time vacancies that exist out of one hundred, hundred and one approved positions. So, it is our responsibility to provide salary and benefits that are competitive. And certainly, I, I think every employer in the city of Livingston shares that responsibility.
And certainly, certainly these employees, these new employees need to be in line with the current place we have and the pay schedule that we have set for them.
Any other questions in that email?
No, I would say, no, it's not fair, that we probably are all underpaid the five minutes. Just like the rest of the people in town, because we don't work for the city either. And so, I mean, I think that's part of what we talked about when we were offering equitable wages, was that Montana wildly underpays compared to other states, like for real. Well, probably for real, the five of us are probably underpaid compared to where, if we lived anywhere else, right? Just like the rest of town, so. So, I would acknowledge that.
Okay, so I think that those are the questions from public comment. Do you see any more? Okay, so I think that that then puts us to deliberations. Certainly, there were some other things said during public comment that'll allow both to address on their own if they like. Mr. Willet?
I do have one question that questioned deliberation, something to discuss. I see that there's a thirty-day protest period after the election results are certified. We're currently forty-six percent of the way through that deliberation, and we do have one meeting ahead of the thirty days. I'm wondering if it would be prudent for the city to hold off on approving this resolution until the sixteenth of April? Or if that would be, I think, detrimental to the city or the project? Just to let that protest period just stay? Something for us to think about.
Mr. Gager, will you address that?
I don't know what it takes to be your job, I will tell you that. But I appreciate the, the observation, Commissioner Willet. The protest period actually refers to special districts that are created through processes outside of the referendum. And so, the city commission does have the ability to create a special district that's term limited to ten years. And, and that is where the protest period comes in. There is, there is no protest period on the referendum path. Understood?
So we have thirty days from the eighteenth, too.
The nineteenth of March. That's all I have to do.
Mr. Lyons?
As, as far as our responsibility on moving ahead with with the resolution, I guess I would say that I see anything other than reaffirming the will of the voters as irresponsible. I've, I've actually witnessed a legislative body fail to codify a, a referendum before. And it it really was to the detriment of the, of the trust in that legislative body. And I, you know, I, we heard from, we've heard, you know, and this process has been long. It's not just since that, since that referendum was passed, it's been ongoing for some time. And so, we've, we've been hearing from the public for some time. And an appointment tonight is to, was to respect the dissenting opinion. And I think that the, the process that we have followed has given ample opportunity for us to hear and consider that dissenting opinion, and for the voters to hear and consider that dissenting opinion. And I, I appreciate that opinion as much as I appreciate the affirmative opinion. And it's, it's our responsibility to codify what was, what was voted in, in the referendum. So, that's my intention, and I think it would be irresponsible if anything else. I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartz?
Well said, Commissioner Lyons. Yeah, so much disinformation on Facebook and stuff through the sole process is really unfortunate, but it is what it is, and it's out there, you know. But I think we've done a good job of answering the questions and having, you know, an open dialogue. You know, like DCEC hosted, you know, a conversation about, you know, about initiative and stuff like that. And I think, I think Mr. Gager's done a great job of explaining exactly how, how the district was created and what's involved in it, so. I yield.
Mr. Newt?
Yeah, I think I think what surprises me the most about where we are is how incredibly divisive this has all been under the banner of Wellness Center. I've never seen our community seem so unwell. It's pretty disheartening. As a commissioner, every time I leave the house, to have somebody come up to me regardless of how they voted, and they tell me the same things, that they're completely confused and they don't understand what just happened, whether they voted in favor of it or against it. And remembering it was actually like a three to two vote, right? So, out of every five people, three people voted for it, two people voted against it. I would venture to say that's probably true in this room tonight, right? It was pretty split in some ways. The two themes that sort of emerged for me are that people are confused and that people feel forced. So I appreciate the word irresponsible, Commissioner Lyons. I think it would also be irresponsible of us as a commission if we didn't figure out a way to, to try to address where the people in our community are, recognizing that many people feel forced into this regardless of how they voted. And many people feel confused regardless of how they voted. I'm also really concerned about the promises that were made. There were a lot of promises made and talking points. And it's an unbelievable bar to expect that one city department can meet that alone. It makes me real nervous to think that one department is responsible for things like, or that people have the impression that one department's responsible for all of teen suicide, for example. That was a thing that was put out often. And that is a heavy weight to carry, I think, as a commissioner. And I can't imagine the weight that it would be if I was staff and expected. And that's what the community would now expect from a facility. So, I'm less concerned in some ways about the vote of the district, and I'm more concerned about what comes next on a bigger scale. And that is what I'm curious to know, what other commissioners think we should be doing next to address like how divided our community is and the expectations now that come with this project. I yield.
I agree with Commissioner Lyons. I think we're, you know, the voters have spoken, and we're in a position to move forward as, as we should. But I also, I, I agree with Mr. Newt. I think that people are confused and they're, they're yearning and longing and wanting for more information. And I think that that's something that we, as a city, can do. And I think that we can make sure that we're putting out more information. Mr. Gager, I'm wondering if we can look at, you know, set a process of what, what this looks like moving forward? What's coming next? How does this work? Are there continued points of public comment and public engagement? Are there points coming forward where people can still engage on what's going to be in the building? Or, you know, what's going to be outside the building? I've heard a lot about that, and people want to comment and be a part of that. So I think that there's a lot of that that can be done. I heard misinformation on both sides of this topic. So let's, let's be clear that I've seen misinformation from both sides wildly, wild misinformation. But now I think that the city is in a point now where this kind of comes back into our hands, and we can take more control of disseminating the information to the public and allowing them to know what this is going to look like, what the process looks like, what to expect moving forward. Unfortunately, when something gets put on a ballot, because we put it there, we as the city don't get to engage around asking you to do something or not to do something. But it allows people in the community to go out and either advocate for something or not advocate for something, or advocate against it. We don't get to tell those people what they can and can't say. We don't get to tell those people what they can and can't say. And so that happened. And I think that yes, there was misinformation on both sides. So now we're in a point where we need to take control of the narrative and inform the public as to what what is happening, what they can expect and where they can engage. That's my thought on all of this. As we're as we're looking at this. I'm happy to go around another time if folks have anything else.
I'll just reaffirm your point. I I I acknowledge your point of the fact that we now have the opportunity to engage and direct the conversation and facilitate the conversation. And, you know, I don't, I there's not, I actually don't think that there's much responsibility the commission or the city can take for where the conversation went during a period in which we're severely limited and discouraged from engaging in that conversation. So, you know, like we live in a, we live in a and in and in an environment where online wild and and usually negative things come to the top of the algorithm. And and we don't need to be beholden to an algorithm going forward. And so I just, just, I I really just wanted to reiterate your point that that now the responsibility of the way in which that conversation happens is on the city. And I trust that that Mr. Gager will ensure that that happens in a productive way that can help bring the correct information to the community and and elicit, you know, responsible feedback. So thanks for making that point and I I just would like to reaffirm.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartz?
Yield.
Mr. Newt, yield. Are we ready to move forward?
I am.
Wolf Hall, please.
Chair Cale.
Four.
Vice Chair Newt.
Four.
Mr. Schwartz.
Four.
Mr. Lyons.
Four.
Mr. Willich.
Four.
Washington Charles.
We are six forty-five. I'm wondering, do we want to take a break now or we're we're done?
Sure.
Let's take a break. Okay, can I have a motion?
Make a motion to move for ten, uh, motion to take a break for ten minutes. Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Lyons. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are going to take a break. We'll be back at six fifty-six.
Thank you.
I knew that stand up.
All right, I am going to bring us back to order this Livingston City Commission meeting at six fifty-six P M. We are moving on to the next action item, B Ordinance thirty fifty-two. In ordinance, the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending Article four of Chapter nine of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled Parking, Stopping and Standing by amending amending certain sections to clarify parking requirements and remove references to fee amounts which are set separately by resolution. Mr. Gager?
Thank you, Chair Cale. The item before you is the first reading of Ordinance three zero five two, which seeks to make minor and technical changes to the the parking requirements. Please know that as part of the ongoing downtown master plan project, there is a a parking study that is being performed. And so the the intent here this evening was not to make any major changes to our parking scheme downtown. Those may or may not be a product of the downtown master plan rather. What we're doing here tonight is is similar to an action we took with the rest of the municipal code back in the fall to remove the dollar amount references from the from the Livingston Municipal Code, as those are now codified in the citywide fee resolution. And 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 parking fees and penalties are already included in that fee resolution. So thirty days after the the repeal of, or excuse me, thirty days after the second reading of of the ordinance, those those fees in the resolution would become effective, although they are unchanged from what's included in the ordinance currently. And then as we were doing that, our our code enforcement team no- noticed a few potential clarifications that we could make within the the parking ordinance, such as clarifying that 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 folks cannot park on a sidewalk or or within a bicycle facility. And 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 we've made some other kind of cleanups that that we hope make the ordinance read a little better. And so again, this is the first reading and I am happy to stand for any questions that the commission may have.
Commissioners?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Section nine dash two three six, Storage on Streets, page seventy-three. Just asking why the change went from seventy-two hours of in-op vehicles to five days?
Absolutely a fair question. This is something that we had heard. And actually, this conversation goes as far back to our prior police chief when we started work on this ordinance. And so this actually applies not only to inoperable vehicles, but to all vehicles. And the increase to the five days, we heard feedback from community members that seventy-two hours or three days really doesn't allow people to take a vacation Monday through Friday unless they have a place to, you know, move a vehicle. Because there are some people we recognize who are consistently moving their vehicle every several days. And so this change was really to kind of facilitate convenience for the community, if you will. Understood?
Yeah, thank you.
Do you still have the floor, Commissioner?
That's it for me. Thank you, I yield.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Lyons?
On page eighty-one, section nine dash two fifty, I see, you know, and I understand that a a large motivation here is to take out the reference to the fees because we're, that's to be adopted by a separate action. But then I see that here, and this is about vehicle immobilization, that there, we added a threshold for immobilization of at least a total of a hundred dollars in unpaid parking tickets. So to me, that seems somewhat conflicting of the intention of of what we're voting on today and then adding this this dollar threshold. So could you explain or or justify that addition for me?
Yeah, that's that's actually a a a good observation. And so, you know, the the hundred dollars that is included in there now as a threshold at this point equates to five parking tickets because of parking tickets twenty dollars here, certainly an overtime ticket. And so, but we do recognize that there may come a point in the future where that where that hundred dollars actually equates to a different number of tickets for for different infractions. And so recognizing that some infractions are are more more severe than others and potentially deserve different penalties than others. And I'll speak, you know, quite clearly about parking in a in a disabled or handicap parking space. The 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 enforcement team felt that having the ability to immobilize a vehicle in some of those circumstances might be might be beneficial if if we had somebody who was was known to be parking in in handicapped or disabled spaces. We didn't necessarily want to perhaps wait until we had caught them five times doing that if if we were able to immobilize that vehicle and and address the situation.
Thank you for that answer. I think that's that's it as far as clarifying questions for me, so I will yield for now. Thank you.
Mr. Schwartz?
Regarding, page seventy-two, regarding section nine, two, three, four, restricted parking zones, fifteen minute parking zone. I I like this addition that the city manager is authorized to add and remove fifteen minute parking zones that's deemed necessary by the manager. Because I've had at least one business owner approach me back when we were doing, you know, signage downtown about having a fifteen minute zone in front of his business. And I don't think he took it further, but it's nice to know that. It's a pretty simplistic to be able to call you and assess the situation, see if it's be be necessary. So I I like I like that addition. And it kind of goes in hand with, you know, allowing, you know, a three hour threshold for a business. Have we deemed, have we made that decision on some, or did they just petition the city manager for that as well? I didn't look that close.
So we we are aware from the Business Owners Breakfast this past fall that there are some businesses that that benefit and and perhaps their operations somewhat, you know, necessitate.
Right. I remember reading about that, yeah.
And and, you know, hair salons and and coloring is 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 one example that we've heard. We have not identified specific locations for those three hours, although we we know some business owners that have mentioned it. And so if if that allowance was approved, we would do some outreach to potentially affected business owners to see if they're interested.
Right, you know, on either side of the zones, yeah.
And and so generally speaking, the the thought there is a lot of our fifteen hour, or excuse me, fifteen minute spots are on the ends of blocks.
Right.
Or, and so we may consider a similar arrangement with those three hour spots to.
Somewhere out of the, yeah, out of the way, okay. Now, other than that, everything I, I like it. Looks good. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Vice Chair Newt?
Instead of going off what Commissioner Schwartz said, there's, there's a couple of spots where this is suggesting we add city manager authority for parking, for some parking zones. And obviously, for anyone who's read the ordinance, it's loaded with very specific examples that were set up through passing ordinance at the commission for comparable spots, right, other fifteen minute spots or loading zones, et cetera. So I'm curious to know about the difference in process and how can we how can we standardize it, right? Because it seems, I don't know, it seems, it seems weird, conflicting. I don't know what the right word is. It seems odd to me that we would have things set up in both branches of government for the same function. So I'm just curious if there's, if you have thoughts on like what's the best prac- practice? Because I imagine some of these, you know, looking at the dates, some of them came in quite some time ago, some of the updates. Our form of government probably shifted around over time. So do you have thoughts on like best practice? Because it makes me curious to think that there's two, I don't know, two different branches of government doing the same function.
I I certainly appreciate that that recognition, Vice Chair Newt. And that was something that we chatted about internally as we were working through this. And, you know, I I guess section nine dash two three four, which Commissioner Schwartz just discussed, really is is probably the easiest for folks to see that where subparts A, B, and C actually talk about specific locations in the city for such fifteen minute spots. And I I'll be honest, that is a bit unconventional in my experience for us to designate certain spots specifically in in the ordinance. However, I do recognize that that those spots have have some historical provenance to them, whatever that may be. It predates me. And and I do expect when we get back the results of the downtown master plan that they will have actually identified some more ideal locations or some ideal locations for fifteen minute spots. And so I I do expect that the location of fifteen minute zones may change. I welcome the commission's input if if you folks are are willing to, you know, kind of give that ability for myself and staff to assess those those historical allowances. We we left them here for the time being, but but I do recognize the the difference there. And it is a little bit unconventional in in my experience to have spots called out so specifically as they are here. But again, I I do recognize there probably is some historical significance and and purpose to those spots.
It might, the other thing that stands out to me is on page twenty-four that there was, this is since I've been on the commission, nine dash two four two, part eight, that we voted to change a loading zone and it never actually changed. And so that's another thing, that if the commission's voting on things, but it's not actually changing in practice, you know, it makes our vote, it makes our vote somewhat. Are you thinking about where that is?
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
So it was going to move around the corner. It was going to move around the corner on the B Street. It's a loading by counterpoint. And the reason I remember, and I remember this specifically, is Commissioner Schwartz said, yes, when those buses are there, it's hard to see the stop signs and then people run them. So it would make more sense from a safety perspective. I remember that you said something along those lines. You can correct me if I was.
No, you're right, yeah.
But I was like, oh, yeah, because I come from a different direction and you come from that direction when we come to an intersection. So, um, but it's also like if the commission's going to vote on things and then nothing ever changes, then it's like, you know, it means that the commission's vote wasn't followed and that's an issue as well. And so, right, so if the city manager decides he wants to change something, for example, and then the signage changes and the commission votes on signage and it doesn't change, it's just like a consistency to work out, I think. You know, and my hope, I guess, is that perhaps through this like downtown process, maybe like the planning process, maybe we can just get another, a better process around signs and parking in general. I feel like it's, it always feels like a lot to be voting on a parking spot at a commission meeting. And I wonder if we could just maybe consider a more effective process. And I don't know what that looks like, but hopefully you can, that's your job maybe to figure that out. Like where it meets the needs of the commissioners, but we don't have to vote on every
Right, exactly.
sign or curb that gets painted. Just my opinion.
I agree.
I would welcome the conversation though, because this seems like a very confusing ordinance. We almost need a map to go with it to understand it. The other thing is, it seems like maybe some things are outdated. When I was reading about city park property in section nine dash two forty, not all of our parks are in the downtown master plan, but when we're considering parking, if we're trying to set up some sort of standardized allowed parking or disallowed parking around public parks, we have a lot more parks than we used to that are sizable, right, like Green Acres is a significant park and do we need to? I don't know what we need to consider, but my hope is that we can do more of a comprehensive update when we start, that's consistent across the city. The other, oh, I had a question. So this is way shifting gears now, so this is not about any of the ordinance. But now that we have had a code enforcement officer for some time and we're talking about parking, do you have any reflections that you would offer the commission now that we've had somebody out and about in the community? Like are there any themes that have emerged, other than like maybe what you're addressing here, like things that should be brought to our attention or interesting fun facts? That we should know about what this person's seeing out in the world in Livingston?
You know, I I think we've had a lot of learnings over the last six months or so, eight, well, nine months now, the the person being in the position. And I I think it's something that that you will see when downtown master plan works its way up to you for for approval. But we, I I think we have recognized that we do not have a a parking capacity problem by and large in the central business district. The 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 team was out there doing traffic counts in in July and then again in in November, I believe. And and then again in February. And I I think they only identified two blocks in in two hours of all of those sampling periods where the the parking capacity was above ninety percent, which is generally considered a threshold for when it's considered difficult to find parking. And so, you know, I I I think we've learned that really managing the resource that we have is is probably going to be an effective solution. And that said, we've also recognized that the the function of the off-street lots that are controlled by the city And um, that said, we've also recognized that the uh, the function of the off-street lots that are controlled by the city um, could could be updated. And so, you know, I I guess I'm specifically uh, referring to um, you know, possibly converting some of those off-street spaces that are all currently um, given to monthly um, pass holders and and not available to the general public. Um, it it sure seems like perhaps we could turn some of those spaces over to use um, by the general public, which um, would probably facilitate more uh, long-term parking in the downtown um, for for certain people who don't currently have off- access to off-street opportunities. Um, we are uh, we are working through a transition from our paper ticketing system that's been in place to a a digital um, management system and and that system would allow um, more effective uh, and different use of those off-street lots, including uh, selling daily, daily passes um, or just enabling daily use even in an unpaid situation. So um, I think we've, we've got more parking resources than folks realize and I I think we're starting to manage them in a, in a more effective way. And and I, we've heard some comments from from downtown business owners that um, the the parking experience did improve uh, a bit in the last nine months. So I'm encouraged by the work that uh, that we've accomplished out there. And uh, but but we're by no means done. And um, a- and then, you know, Vice Chair Noots, to um, to your point, I, other cities I have served in actually have a a traffic authority um, that manages, because you know, parking and and uh, road behavior is is maybe a little bit more technical than some other issues that we deal with. And so I am familiar with a a number of cities that have a traffic authority and 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 everything from speed limits to uh, parking zones um, to to other, you know, traffic configurations um, in- including roundabouts at at Main and Calendar, for instance, are um, would be defined by by those, that that type of boards. So not that that's anything we're we're working on, but just as as a.
Yeah, that was an April Fool's joke. I'm just gonna like say that, because not everybody um, understands your sense of humor. And so I'm just gonna like state that on the record, that that was an April Fool's joke online that you were.
It was, but but not perpetrated by me.
Correct, by the city. Okay, um, but speaking of, speaking of the enterprise with an S, not a Z, the real enterprise, um, there was a comment made in the paper that we're gonna be changing some parking rules potentially, such as banning people from camping in or living in campers. So I was hoping that you could offer some clarity around um, the suggestion of proposed changes to that part of the ordinance.
Um, yeah, thank you. I I appreciate the the question, uh, Vice Chair Noots, and I guess referring specifically to section nine dash two, four, one on through seventy-four of the packet. Um, I just, the camping uh, on city streets um, has uh, has been uh, something that is disallowed in the ordinance for uh, a number of years. Um, we were simply clarifying the 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 list of motor vehicles um, as has come up. And so.
Yeah.
We're we're not actually creating a new prohibition so much as we are just clarifying uh, return of the vehicles.
Yeah, thank you. I just want, I think it's important that people understand what we are and are not changing or proposing changes to.
Right, exactly, we're not, yeah.
I yield.
Thank you. Um, I think I just have one, maybe just one question. I am curious about the three hour parking spot. How does that work? So I I guess, meaning that I know that there would be some businesses, I'm thinking in particular, as you mentioned, like salons that would like some three hour parking because of the way that their business runs. How? If I'm going there to get my hair done and I wanna park in a three hour parking spot, but someone else is shopping and only spending fifteen minutes that they parked in a three hour parking spot, like how does? What does that look like? Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. It's just like you, you get it if you can and, you know, and if you don't.
Yeah, un- unfortunately, they they would be there on a uh, first come, first served basis. We uh, we have not created the signage yet. Um, so I I would imagine that that there's a way we can creatively sign those to to let people know that um, you know, they're they're more for long-term uses than short-term. But unfortunately, yes, it's first come, first served.
I think everyone else has asked my questions. Um, so that brings us, any other further questions that spur up? Okay. So that brings us to the possibility of a motion and then moving into public comments.
I'll make the motion to approve the first reading of ordinance, three zero five two.
Motion by Schwartz.
One second.
Second by Willish. So now we're looking up to public comments. Uh, so let's go ahead and go in the ring.
Rodeo ticket sales.
Uh-oh.
Uh, Leslie Feigl, three oh three East Park Street, Livingston, Camper and Converse. So for the last couple of years, I've been coming in front of the commission uh, before Mr. Gager uh, was our city manager, and bringing up this um, from many of our um, salons. Salon, also the um, storage for the um, the Yellowstone uh, Film Ranch and a few other businesses. So I believe that it's not, shouldn't be where it's at. Uh, respectfully, um, I put it in my request um, that the three hour is not a parking spot. We already have issues with parking spot, but it's a parking permit, so that the city would actually gain money from, like they do in Bozeman, they do this over there. So um, uh, say like Tara's uh, the Lions main salon can buy a hundred dollars a year um, a parking permit that um, when she has a client that comes in that wants one of those full treatments and knows she's gonna be there more than two hours, she gives it to her, she goes and puts it on the dash so that your code enforcement lady can actually see, oh, this is one of those special permits. And then when lady's done, she comes, give permit, gives back to the business owner. I would say depending on the size of the business, you could have, or they could buy a maximum of two permits. So it doesn't matter where the parking permit, uh, the parking spot is, it just simply is in a parking spot with that little pass that has um, you know, a time limit on it of the three hours. Um, again, um, most of the um, over on B Street where the Film Ranch um, does their storage, uh, one of their trucks, again, the same thing, they could go in, they get their per- parking permit pass, put it on there. Most of the work that they do, they can load a truck within the three hours, it's usually two to three hours, um, then take their permit back in. And so a permit pass, not one of those all-day construction passes. So this is just one of those annual passes that you can purchase. And when I researched this, it was over in Bozeman, it's in a few other cities where they actually have those passes that you would simply put on your windshield there. Um, instead of an actual designated spot. So that was um, one of them. And again, um, I've heard from a few businesses, there were some issues that are occurring, and I really wanted to come up in front of you, um, commissioners tonight. And we have, we have to be, find a way that when we do these kind of code enforcements and regulations, we still have to find a way to be business friendly. And we have businesses on Park Street, we have businesses on Front Street, we have businesses on, you know, of course, your little downtown um, corridor there. But you, I know that during the downtown master plan, there were some folks that really wanted to um, turn alleyways into pocket parks and crazy things like that, when we have a historic town that a lot of the parking spaces are behind there. Like we have a flower shop, they have one parking space. And, you know, the alleyways have different parking spaces, they've been there for years, and to start um, you know, ticketing them or making them move and when they're clearly not in the way of fire code and all of that, we just have to be, find a way to be business friendly, right? And um, we have a a shop that is on Park Street, the the tow trucks come in. Well, we all know how to tow vehicles, right? Well, when a tow truck pulls in, they don't just pull in like that, they have to turn around and back in and drop a car, right? So that means the car's gonna be facing the other direction. So it's about finding a way to be a little bit business friendly when we're looking at how we're ticketing people, giving a reasonable and prudent time, contacting the business and saying, hey, you got a car that got dropped off during the night, which they know they do, which I'm talking L Street, and allowing them to rectify it in the next, you know, twenty-four hours, when we're, you wanna give people five days before, you know, they move a camper. And, you know, versus the three days here. So um, and we know that we've talked about this, there's lots of those kind of issues that happen around the community. Um, it, we used to call it like camper in uh, boat season. When everybody out in the neighborhoods used to just show up and all of a sudden you start seeing all the little flag fishing boats parked down the streets in front of people's houses. And then there's like less parking out on, you know, we're talking Yellowstone Street, all those streets, right? So um, it uh, I think that just maybe a little bit more looking at just a few of these ordinances around here, but instead of having it where you do put it under, I think it's section nine, where you put the um, the special permit versus the three hour parking space. It's gonna make you money and um, save you a little bit of headache. Um, I thank you for listening to me, ravel on, but um, you know, pro-business.
Thanks, Leslie.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room?
Patricia Graybo, two oh four East Calendar Street, uh, where I've lived for twenty-five years downtown. So I really know parking. Um, I I'm kind of disappointment, disappointed that the commission is taking this up tonight. Seems to me that we should get the results of the master plan before this gets taken up. Uh, makes more sense to me. This is pretty disjointed. Um, uh, in in fact, it's disappointingly disjointed. I, I, as a commissioner, I attended the National Main Street Project, spent a week in just the parking segment of the National Main Street uh, project and and heard various coordinated, intelligent systems of parking for an entire community, taking whole community into into consideration. But the really totally disappointing part to me is that we didn't hire Dan Burden to do our parking analysis. We already had him do the streets and then he he had a secondary plan, which would be, for example, residents who live downtown would have certain per- permits and they would park in certain areas. Um, every parking spot in the downtown, according to the main National Main Street project runs about two hundred thousand dollars in value to businesses. These are, I was just doing a list of the downtown businesses and there's over a hundred and ten, just on the streets downtown. These are vital to the well-being and the survival of these businesses, and some businesses simply live in places, even though our parking expert seems to think there's adequate places. I have to circle the th- the block three times to get to, to uh, Main Street Print Shop. I don't have to do that when I go to other parts of the downtown. Uh, and Dan Burden had worked out such an intelligent plan, overall plan for parking. So I would suggest seriously that this um, ordinance uh, be tabled until after we get our master plan. Doesn't make any sense to do this tonight. Um, and and I also have been president downtown, uh, not only, but I lived downtown for twenty-five years, but I've been president downtown building order and business association. And we raised the money to get Dan Burden here the first time, and for the last fifteen years, we have worked on parking for downtown Livingston. Our hope was at last, we would do it well. Now, Burden is one of the six people, top people in the world in parking. He designed Whitefish parking, and you tell me that it go to Whitefish and see what they think, because they have a coordinated plan, is exceptionally well done. It's time Livingston steps up to the plate and do it, does it right. And so I I would, I think this is entirely premature tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Patricia. Anyone else in the room? In the room? Okay, we'll go online. Anyone online like to make public comment? Feel free to raise your hand or come off mute and just give us your name. Give everyone a minute to make sure they can get situated. I'll ask one more time. Any more public comments? Being none, we'll go ahead and post public comments. I think we had a couple of questions. Um, one, Mr. Gager, why now? Maybe, when? Maybe one?
Um, eh, no, I, why now is a a a good question. Um, as I alluded to earlier, uh, you know, we started discussing these changes in the fall um, when when uh, we uh, started doing the fee um, resolution update. Uh, but we knew that there were, there were some upcoming changes. Um, and and specifically, we also had the the Business Owner Breakfast and wanted to to get some feedback from them. Um, and and so we we waited um, to to implement this and uh, and then we had some other priorities that that kind of jumped in in and and I do respect the point of perhaps we should wait. Uh, we do expect the the draft of the downtown master plan to work its way up to the consolidated land use board very likely in May and come to you folks in June. Um, but I do recognize that that working through uh, a community process, um, especially as it relates to parking in the downtown core, is very likely to be a uh, a a lengthy process, as it should be. Um, and so we uh, recognize that 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 process probably would not conclude until um, after the summer season. And there there were a a few changes uh, based on the observations on the ground um, from our parking enforcement team um, that that we would like to implement uh, before this coming summer. Um, specifically, uh, we don't have the ability to ticket somebody if they park on a sidewalk in downtown Livingston. Um, that's, that's actually legal right now. Um, so there's, there's a few things that we thought were, and and that is a situation that we have encountered in the last nine months, where there's a car parked on the sidewalk. Um, and so we we thought that uh, before the summer um, season was a a good time to implement some of these operational changes that we think will um, you know, make the ex- the parking experience downtown better for everyone.
And just, I guess I'll follow up a little bit with that and then we'll go to all the other commissioners, but um, will we have the opportunity to make adjustments to this after we get all the information from the downtown?
Oh, very likely, and and we expect uh, a process to kick off that at that time. Um, and and to Chair and or Vice Chair Noots' earlier point about um, you know, who is the the proper uh, uh, authority uh, to make certain um, decisions on the street. Um, you know, I I think that's something that we'll likely address at that point as well.
All right, I think that was kind of the questions we heard from public comment, so. Did I miss any?
Um, I would be curious to know about Leslie's question, if that's been considered, the idea of a permit and like also how that would be operationalized, like, so that hypothetically speaking, one person wasn't just hoarding it and using it every day, all day long, looking around the block for three hours at a time, right? So I'm just curious, like, what insight you have on that?
And and and.
Yeah, because I also pre- I appreciate Leslie coming with creative ideas to add to the conversation, and I'm curious if you've thought it out, so thank you.
I haven't, and I will.
Yeah.
I'll join you in saying, I I appreciate the the greatest suggestions, as I always do, from um, all community members, especially those that regularly attend our meetings. Um, that said, I I actually am familiar with um, paper passes um, that get handed around um, on the street and and actually the the parking operation that I managed prior to this had a a similar um, setup. The 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 main problems with that one are um, the ability to counterfeit paper passes um, is is pretty easy, especially in this day and age with printing technology and whatnot. Um, and and then it also uh, becomes a a an equity issue. Um, you know, we we identify very easily hair salons as as one business that may benefit from the three hour um, parking spaces. But quite honestly, our our downtown really is full of them. A lot of our um, professional service providers and others um, very possibly would would benefit from um, three hour parking for some of their customers and clients. And so um, you know, the uh, unless these types of passes are numbered, they can very quickly um, expand in number or are are limited in number, they can very quickly expand in number, essentially rendering the two hour zone useless, right? And then so. And then so if, if we do limit the number, um, as we do with our, our off-street um, spaces, um, you know, eh, how do we ensure that those passes are distributed equitably? Um, because first come, first served, I think we recognize does have some pitfalls. And, and you've got uh, off-street spots that have been um, now, you know, utilized or are reserved for certain folks for um, several years that, that they may not use them as efficiently as other folks may. And so um, really it becomes a little bit difficult about understanding where to draw that line with the number and allocation of those three hour passes, um, and counterfeit measure. Uh, makes it, you know, even more difficult to manage. So um, you know, the, the the equity of, of first come, first served on, on these limited time, time limited spots um, really has, in my experience, turned out to be the, the most fair way to allocate.
Thank you. That was the yeah, I was curious to your, thank you. Um, so we'll go ahead. Um. Deliberation, further question, we can just start on the table if we'd like. Um, Mr. Silver, Mr. Willett?
Sure. Um. I mean, I feel that I feel this is Graybo's point where we should probably, you know, waive this again when the master plan comes through, which I guess we're two months away from. Um, I'm still kind of stuck on the uh, non-licensed dirt inoperable motor vehicle uh, section essentially being struck through um, having had junked vehicles parked in front of my house and the difficulty it takes to get them moved. But um, if this is going to be revisited again, then uh, I don't see too much reason to to beat a dead horse for, for right now. Yeah, I don't have much to add. I'm just wanting to try to at least have some sort of a a section four in uh, or unlicensed vehicles as a di- different category than vehicles that are fully licensed and operational. We should keep that as a this, this is subsection of something. I yield.
Commissioner Lyons?
Um. It looks like my comments uh, um, in increasing order, uh, in my opinion of gravity, uh, and also in series through the paper, just so happens. So um. I noticed typo. Uh, it looks like there was some work to avoid typos, so I figured I'd add to it. Uh, page seventy of the packet. Um, except when necessary in obedience to, and then there's a comma, uh, shouldn't be there. Um. So that's that one. Uh, kind of maybe not necessarily a typo, but rather might help to um, improve the point on page seventy one, section nine dash two one. Um, says that's one long sentence, so I'm gonna start, start at the end. Nor shall it apply to a necessary stop in obedience to traffic regulations or traffic signs or signals of a police officer, I might add, or emergency vehicles there. Um, you know, it's good to pull over for um, for ambulances as well and not get a ticket for it. Um. Then I think we go all the way to the end. On page eighty two. Uh, we had this conversation when we were talking about the noise ordinance, about jail time. That was something that um, potential jail time is something that uh, scared our citizens. Um. And so maybe this is a, a question to, actually, I am gonna start. I'm gonna pose this as a question to Mr. Gager. Mr. Gager, when we were talking about the appropriateness of jail time as it related to the noise ordinance. Um, you, you proposed a scenario where a fine was inadequate to dissuade um, an act, uh, a, a choice or an activity that, you know, you, you had seen somewhere else or could envision. Um. Is there a similar way, scenario or way to justify jail time for parking?
Um, I, I appreciate the question, Commissioner Lyons, and um, uh, before I answer, I, I will just point out that we are not proposing any changes to nine dash two five four um, as presented here this evening. That said, uh, removing the jail time uh, and, and um, limiting the, the penalty of a person convicted of unauthorized release of, of immobilized vehicle. Um, that would be advantageous for anybody that has more than five hundred dollars worth of tickets to remove the immobilizer off the boot or the boot off their vehicle if we are limiting the penalty to only five hundred dollars. And so if I had a thousand dollars in tickets, I've just saved myself five hundred dollars by removing the boot.
Uh, thanks, but I, I, I couldn't construe that in my imagination, so I appreciate you sharing that. Um, also appreciate you kind of pointing out that um, this, this issue that I'm identifying is not in a change to the ordinance. Um, but rather in the existing ordinance and that we might have a little bit more comprehensive evaluation of this ordinance after we hear from the results of the downtown master planning network. Um, so that makes me feel kind of as Commissioner Willett was, was saying as well, it makes me feel like maybe that's not now's not the time to talk about that. And we're talking about really these these quick ad hoc adjustments to prepare us for the summer season and um, to kind of address the concerns of those working in enforcement. Um, so I made the points about um, the the typo and the clarification. Um, and I am eager to look at this in closer um, with, with more scrutiny, um, when we have more information from that of master planning process. Um, I see parking as a really important um, use of public space. Actually, if you were to look at, at how much space in Livingston is dedicated to parking, it's, it's a really important um, a- aspect of, of what the city controls. So I don't take it, I don't, I don't, you know, it's, it's probably boring to most people, but it's not for me to me. Um, and I look forward to having that conversation and, you know, and
I'll keep it short. So um, fundamentally, we're really not changing, changing very, very little. And it's the main thing is to be, get the fees, the fees off of this ordinance. Um, so we go to the fee schedule that we've adopted. So and I look forward to um, you know, looking at the uh, what the master plan comes up with, with the downtown and uh, and certainly revisiting this and amending it as, as necessary. So um. I see no reason to table this at the point, at this point, basically, so we can take the fees out of the ordinance and move it to resolution or however we did it. So um. About to beat a dead horse, but yeah, let's uh, I yield.
Okay. They should not be beating any horses. That's dead or alive. What's that? What is Chair Newt?
Um, I have um, in the spirit of Commissioner Lyons, page sixty nine, um, letter R, potential a word about, a question about a word, and if this word needs to be changed, no parking. She'll obstruct general maintenance upon the public right of way within the city when notified by the city in advance of such work. Is when the correct word there or should that say unless notified? I think, I think what you're trying to say, right, is that you can't get in the public right of way unless you talk to the city first, right?
So actually, what, what we're saying is if the city notifies somebody that they need to move their vehicle because we will be doing work the next day or the next week.
Okay.
That would generate
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Now I'm following. Okay.
Like if we had to replace a sewer line or water or curb or something, that
Yes, yes, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Chip ceiling.
Um, yeah, yeah. So I love me some public planning. And so I'm excited. Um, I'm excited for the master plan and big changes. I really see this to Commissioner Schwartz's point, it's just about fees, but also about this enforcement and in the years that I've been on the commission, this is one of the things that has come up. I mean, I have not, I should have counted. I didn't count. However, it hasn't come up in the last few months because we have somebody enforcing parking downtown finally, and so it hasn't been coming up. And so I, if we, and I think we have more staff right now and also commissioners that do the deep dive on parking than we've ever had in terms of like longevity and the amount of cities they've worked in and parking and done the work in parking. That if we have some simple changes, I would trust that experience that these are simple enforceable things that we can do with the people power that we have. Um, and perhaps we won't have to drive around the block three times to get parking. If parking is being enforced, um, if the limits are being enforced. So I think that it's if it, this is a small tweak that we can do to make it easier for staff to do their jobs. It makes sense to me.
In the spirit of typos, I found one as well. Uh, page seventy seven, um, about the wind rider, the penalty for parking. Should I think this should be in either of the wind rider spaces and it says is either of the wind rider spaces? Um, so if I'm not. Um. So what I have to say is very similar to what my fellow commissioners have said. To me, this seems like a, 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 a brief update that we'll do to go through this summer season. Um, so that it's more enforceable for city employees. We're making some adjustments, adjustments that need to be made because of moving fees out of an ordinance and into a resolution. I look forward to the downtown master plan coming out and that process. I'm assuming once that draft comes out, there's gonna be some more public process around that. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Um, and so to get that public process and to get more public input um, and then to use that to look at, have a good look at this, um, I think would be excellent. So I see this as just uh, let's get ready for a busy summer season. Um, so we have a place to start and then we will, we address, we have all the information. Anything else? Commissioner
I just
Oh, Commissioner Lyons, I'll come to Commissioner Schwartz. Yeah, I'll stand at first.
Um, later on, I forgot to say everything that I want.
Oh, my gosh.
But uh, Vice Chair News, I just want to um, I want to support Vice Chair News' comment about um, re- reconsidering or examining the responsibility of the commission as it pertains to at least like some level of, of um, bestotaining, if that's ever uh, the, this ordinance. Uh, I think, you know, it, it seems like very much like an executive function of the city. Um. Now, I'm saying that, which is kind of going against the other thing I said, which is that this is an important authority of the city is parking and that it's, that it, that it's something I'm interested in and I think matters a lot. Um, but figuring out maybe an improved process of how, you know, a, a request might be responded to. Um, i- is something I, I'm, I'm very open to and interested in because you know, we, so, so a, a priority of mine, and I think um, I'm not sure how much I've, I've said this i- in, in open meeting, but a priority of mine is to be kind of efficient in how we run these meetings because we need to be respectful of the, the volunteer time that's coming from the public as well. And so that means like streamlining the things that we discuss at this table. Um, and I, so I'm, I simultaneously hold an opinion that parking is very important and that there might be ways that we could streamline the way that we, we consider um, needs around parking. So um, I'll leave it at that. I yield.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Um, I just wanted, I forgot to mention the, a shout out to code enforcement for doing such a good job. Um, it's, I, I have noticed a much better parking situation. I'm able to find a part, you know, place, you know, without, you know, going around the block five times, you know, and uh, um, and I know business owners, several business owners down there appreciate it, have noticed the difference. So um, yeah, great job. It's been a long time in coming. I mean, to be consistent, and that's what we've been lacking. If some, you know, people are gonna complain, they always do, no matter what, but um, I'm happy to see the, the way things have been going. And I think it's, I've had a much better experience downtown. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just add on to a couple of things. So like to Commissioner Lyons' point, I agree. Thank you with what you're saying. I think that, um, and I appreciate that that's one thing that you've brought to the commission. I have heard you address that. So thank you. Um. I also don't think it's bad that the executive branch has authority. I mean, that's why we have separate powers of government. And so I don't think it's appropriate for the city commission to have a conversation about every parking ticket, for example, like there's people better equipped to do that than us. Um, and I agree. I always get excited when my tires get chalked. Thank you. Cause I know you're out there working and we really haven't heard complaints the way, like about parking, the way I have ever heard. If you could go back in time before you were here and see the kinds of things that we heard, it is drastically different that we are not getting regular complaints about parking downtown. So thank you. It's meaningful.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Helen. I'm just gonna say your name. We keep talking about the code enforcement officer. Helen is the lady and thank you very much, Helen. Um. I'm sure when we go digital, you'll hear those complaints. We'll hear about it. Um, anything? Right. So we had a motion. I'm just trying now, I'm going back to where we were. We had a motion, we did public comment, we did deliberations. We've offered some corrections, which were typos. Um, the only real change I've, I, I heard was about the emergency vehicles. Mr. Gager, I know that probably we'll need to add an amendment because we're adding the emergency vehicles. What do you want me to, how would you like, you get motion to, to be worded with that type of?
Uh, if, if the commission is so desiring to um, add the emergency vehicles, um, certainly I think a, a motion um, to add more emergency vehicles at the end of section nine dash two, three, one. And also to make the um, scrimmers error or typographical errors uh, or correct the typographical errors that, errors identified by the commission would be a suitable motion that I totally just butchered. So a lot of apologies for that.
So we will need an amendment because we have a motion on the table.
Can we check in with them?
Yeah.
Is that like the language that you would recommend?
That is, yeah. Because the, the, the two um, typographical changes are, are on record and, and snap that direction.
But the, just adding the emergency vehicles seems sufficient?
It, it does. Yeah. I, I, I think it, it, it broadens uh, the lens from police officers because there, there may become a situation where uh, where an EMT or a firefighter is forced to drink traffic. Yeah, so.
So I'm, I might like to, Commissioner Lyons, um, to make an amendment if you would like.
I make an emotion, I make a motion to amend the original motion to include the typograph, typographical changes uh, suggested in deliberation, as well as to include on page seventy one of the packet under section nine dash two thirty one, parking as to impede traffic to include after police officer or other emergency vehicles.
I have an amendment. I have an amendment by Lyons, one second.
One second.
So we will vote on the amendment first, and then we will vote on the motion. So we will start with voting on the amendment, and I'm just going to say it as Commissioner Lyons stated. Roll call, please.
Chair Kale.
For.
Vice Chair News.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Commissioner Willage.
For.
Motion passes. Now, we're going to vote on the original motion that was made by Schwartz and seconded by Willage. Oh.
Cause now we've amended it.
So we've amended, so the amended motion, thank you. So we will vote on the amended motion. Roll call, please.
Chair Kale.
For.
Vice Chair News.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Commissioner Willage.
For.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all. Uh, moving on. We do not, I've been informed, we do not need the closed session this evening, so we're gonna skip over that.
Cool.
Um, and that brings us to city manager comments. Mr. Gager.
Uh, thank you commissioners for your, your time and energy this evening. I really appreciate it and uh, more information is, uh, to be forthcoming later this week, but I did want to, um, bring you up to speed uh, with, um, some upcoming community conversations related to parks and trails uh, in the city of Livingston and follow up, um, to the dissolution of the Parks and Trails Committee last fall. Uh, I'm happy to announce that on, uh, Monday, April twenty-second at nine AM in this room from nine to eleven, uh, myself and other city staff members, including our park superintendent, will be here to, uh, hear from the community on how our parks are managed and operated and, and goals that folks may have. And then now that is a, a daytime session again on April twenty-second at nine AM. And then, uh, the same team will also be back in the room, uh, on an evening session on Tuesday, April thirtieth. And, uh, in this room again at five thirty PM, uh, myself and staff, including our park superintendent, uh, again for the same agenda. Um, so we have at, at least one daytime and one evening session that members of the public uh, can come and, and learn about upcoming park initiatives and, and also voice their, uh, thoughts on, on how the city operates and maintains its parks. So, uh, again, more information will be coming out in a, a coming newsletter, um, but did want to, uh, at least notify the community members that are watching tonight of their opportunity to participate in the, uh, the guidance and management of our parks. So again, thank you for your time this evening, commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Willage.
Uh, another fine evening, and, uh, Commissioner Lyons and I did touch on just for a moment while we were talking about the roundabout on Main, that actually instead of a roundabout, a loop, the loop. More suitable for what we have.
And Commissioner Willage volunteered to be, to test.
Oh, yeah, sure.
With your motorized skateboard?
Oh, yeah. Give more blood. Uh, no, thank you for, uh, pleasant evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Land?
In, uh, in keeping with my, my point about being efficient with our meetings, uh, just want to congratulate the, the chair and the city manager for a meeting closing at, at eight.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yeah, with that said, I yield.
Do we have information on how Commissioner Willage is impacting our city insurance? Since he's been on board, is it going up? The risk is increased with your shenanigans. Um, I yield.
Yeah, uh, thank you all for a good evening, uh, lots of lively conversation. I look forward to more information about the wellness center moving forward and how we're gonna get the information out to the public, um, moving forward to that. Uh, that is all. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, yeah, very good.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at seven fifty-eight PM.